Mr. Ratliff?
Present.
Mr. Schaubert?
Here.
Ms. Lang?
Here.
Mr. Teesmith?
Here.
Mr. Prater?
Here.
Mr. Dickel?
Present.
Mr. R. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Rollins?
Present.
Mrs. Stoneburner?
Okay, we have a motion by the clerk of counsel.
Heavenly Father, we come tonight seeking wisdom, unity, and clarity of purpose. Guide the members of this council as they make decisions that shape our community. Grant them patience in discussion, fairness in judgment, and compassion for all who call this city home. May our work tonight honor the common good and strengthen the well-being of every neighbor. Amen.
The business to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the four states, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, summary of proceedings, as the council had an opportunity to review.
Make a motion to accept.
Mr. R. Smith, Mr. Rollins, or Prater with a second. Clerk, will you take a roll?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teesmith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Okay, old business. Ordinance 2025-F-104, commercial building code. Clerk, will you read?
Ordinance requesting certification to enforce the State of Ohio Building Code as to commercial building codes within the City of Marion as amended.
Okay, this is the third reading. Anything from council, the administration, or the audience? Which is the council?
Make a motion to accept.
Second. Mr. Rollins, second. Clerk, will you take a roll?
Mr. Barr?
Abstain.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mr. Schaubert?
No.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teesmith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Six-two, motion carries. Item number two, ordinance 2025-105, commercial building inspector.
Ordinance to establish the City of Marion Commercial Building Code Enforcement Department as amended.
Any discussion from council, administration, audience? Mr. Daniels?
I wanted to say that if you've got something to say, it's time to say it.
What would you say from the podium, Mr. Daniels?
I know where these people show up, can you go say something? Should've said it prior to it. On, first time I came here, I told you one concern that I had, whether it's commercial codes with the state or whether it's a private inspector, it's not really a hang-up. I said it won't be a year or two years until they're lobbying for residential code because the cost of the commercial code won't cover the use of an inspector. You've seen that in government, it grows. And if you don't have to start enough money to run the department, then you're going to be looking for other sources of revenue. Hundred times we've seen that. And the other source of revenue is going to be a residential building code, which is what fills this room, or at least it did last time, 25 years ago.
And this has nothing to do with the residential?
Oh, it doesn't yet.
Just commercial.
Does not yet. All right, I'm just being a forebearer of harbinger of bad news. I said it might be a year or two, it was not that night, and that inspector was in the back room, I could hear him from down the mezzanine, and he was being lobbied for residential code. And I'm like, it's unavoidable, you're going to end up with it. So I ju- I just say that upfront, and then you guys will have to decide what you want to do when that time comes, but that is my only word. So if anyone else has anything to say, maybe they want to come up now, not let it pass with silence, but...
Mr. Bodine?
I just wanted to assure you, with everything else that's going on in the city, not one time has a residential building code been any part of any plan in the future, and it still remains that way.
Ms. Craig?
Yeah, Ms. Craig, 365 Silver Street. First, I'm going to say this is so much better being right here than it is over there, because now... Okay. You retired being so close to all the speakers on this here. As, to echo what Mr. Daniels said, and kind of compound on what Mr. Bodine said, we've been told a lot of things are and aren't going to happen, so when we get assurances that residential building codes aren't going to happen and are in the works, I don't believe it. And there, I also heard a Westerville guy who has a close association to a former council member who does building inspections for our living, I heard him also being lobbied for residential building codes. And if you think that people are going to pay to put ceiling fans up in their own house, I promise you I will have this place packed so full, you won't be able to move.
Mr. Bodine?
Once again, as long as I'm here, there is not going to be a residential building code.
Which is the council? Mr. Prater?
Yeah, as long as I'm here, I will not support any residential building code.
Mr. Rollins?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Mr. Smith with a second. Clerk, will you take a roll?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one small statement from somebody that served for 20 years and have probably served with 50-plus council people, we're not always all going to be here.
Mr. Feder.
So I reside out of the city, am I allowed to speak?
Make a motion to let him speak.
Second.
Second, will you take a roll?
Sir, as I may...
Hold on a second, Mr. Feder.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teesmith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
I need an address.
Can we get your address, Mr. Feder?
1798 Columbus Nestor Road South.
Thank you.
So, those of you that know me and those of you that don't, I own Feder Brothers Construction and New Commercial Industrial here in Marion, Ohio, and throughout there, Ohio, back. I just want to let you all know, I've had zero issues with the State of Ohio. None. Okay? Now, just to put it to rest for me, I talked to Mr. Schaubert for 45 minutes the last time I was here. Great gentleman. I think he'd be perfect for what you're trying to do. What I don't like is what we're trying to push out some, the State of Ohio that's providing a service for you, for a pretty cheap fee. Okay? We have two projects currently in Marion going on that are commercial, that I can do a video record, I still have a third-party inspection over everything that I do. I don't know how you're going to get away from that, bringing in private, ever do. So explain that to me, either now or no further time, because this gentleman has to be qualified, that when we hit soils, when we're digging, to determine how deep we have to go, and he has to stand there and watch us do it. Or are we going to have a third party come in and do that like we do now? Because that's currently what is going on, both the sites that I'm doing at the moment. And I've had zero problems with the state, or Geotech, or any other party coming in, and okaying what I'm doing. As long as they trust you, they will move you through your project. Okay? And I say that very respectfully, because I've done this for quite a while now. I did the first unit here in Marion for a gentleman sitting in the room right now. And we've had our ups and downs with it, but we got through. Okay? So, and there's more and more to come. I want you guys to keep that in mind when you're bringing a private party in and you're pushing out a party that is doing good for you. Because until you get out into the community and you learn how to run the work and do the jobs and see what's going on, you don't know. I did, because I do it every day. I did it at 3:30 today before they closed, did a video inspection so we could pour on Bell Fountain Park at 7:30 in the morning. All right? So keep that in mind. This is coming from someone that lives here and resides in the county and does a lot of work. Knowing that, if you do pass it, the gentleman here that is going to do it for you, I think is very well-rounded to do it, and he will do it by the book, because he has made assuring me that that would happen. So that's what I wanted to say tonight. I just wanted to make sure that I was known and heard, okay? That's all I have. Thank you.
We have a first and a second on the floor. We have one more comment. Mr. Roush?
I don't live in the city either. I live in the county.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Dickel with a second, will you take a roll?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teesmith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Roush, your address?
5048 Marion Cardigan Road East, Marion, Ohio.
Thank you.
Uh, I just have some questions, is, um, if this goes down and we have a set of plans or anything, and there's things that need to be changed on it, or things we don't agree with, who do we go see after that? Do we go to a board for adjudication? I'm, I'm asking these questions because I would really like to know what we have to do.
From, from my understanding, the appeals process doesn't change. You would still have to go through the state.
Okay, here, okay, so you send a set of plans that are approved by an outside source. The state hasn't seen those plans, correct? And then you're going to go get adjudication from the state? Go in front of the board on a set of plans that they haven't seen until you file a paperwork? Something to think about. Okay? And, uh, I can think of just one project here in town right now, we've probably had seven, eight times on the same project. Something to think about. Okay? So I don't know how that fly-in works, you know, I don't know. I mean, that's something I would think you, someone should, should know, you know, about. So, um, and I, and if you don't have agreements on certain things, you still have to go back to the state. All right, that's all I wanted to find out.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Roush. Still have a first and a second on the floor. Clerk, will you take a roll?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I abstain.
Okay. Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mr. Schaubert?
No.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teesmith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Item number three, ordinance 2025-117, patent-free alley vacation. Clerk, will you read?
Ordinance vacating part of a 16.5-foot public alley lying east of Lot 670 and 671, west of Lot 684 and 685, in the Patton and Wallace addition to the town now City of Marion, Plot Book One, page 46, and retaining permanent easement rights.
Okay, this come out of Streets and Sewers with a 3O recommendation to approve, come out of City Planning Commission with a 7O recommendation to approve, except for a public hearing. You're getting that at 6:44?
45.
6:45. Any comments, questions, concerns? Same, now, hearing that will close, public hearing. Which is the council?
Mr. Dickel and Mr. Rollins.
I'm sorry. Mr. Dickel?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Mr. Rollins?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Dickel. Will you take a roll?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teesmith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number four, ordinance 2025-122, cybersecurity policy. Clerk, will you read?
An ordinance adopting a cybersecurity policy for the City of Marion, Ohio, in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 9.64, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, this come out of Municipal Services. Mr. Teesmith?
Yep, uh, this is just to get us our, uh, our cybersecurity policy in compliance with the State of Ohio. Uh, some amendments were recommended by Councilman, uh, Smith. I'm not sure if they were necessary. If we wanted to ask the law director to weigh in on that, we sure can. But I do think we need to get this moved along, as, uh, it is required by the state. Mr. Law Director, do you have anything to weigh in on this?
I may have mentioned it before, if I did, and I certainly will now. I'd recommend that we put in place this proposed ordinance, it's up for the second reading this evening, because there is, I believe it's an end-of-the-year deadline, and then pick up any proposed changes after the first of the year, to have those debated through the committee process. They're probably worthwhile changes, but my recommendation would be to put in place what the state is requiring, which is what has been cut and pasted from ORC 962 into your ordinance. So it puts in what's required, and then we can go on that after the first of the year.
That makes sense. Anybody else from council have anything to add? I'll, uh, make a motion to suspend.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to suspend the rules.
So, just as a refresher for me, we, we did not pass the amendments that were suggested by Mr. Smith?
They weren't even proposed.
Okay.
It was just a handout.
Okay, thank you.
Take a roll.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teesmith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Teesmith?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dickel. Clerk, will you take a roll?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teesmith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance 2025-098-3, designation of deposits amended. Clerk, will you read?
He's given one second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Item number five, ordinance 2025-123, Lee Street, Dennison Ave, stop signs.
Ordinance authorizing the safety director to amend the master traffic control plan by placing stop signs on Lee Street at Dennison Avenue, finding warrant requirements having been met in regards to the specification, the specific intersection containing herein.
Okay, this is the second reading, come out of Traffic Commission with a 6O recommendation to approve. Any discussion? Mr. Teesmith?
Yeah, I had a question for the safety director. How long have these, I, I understand it's up to your discretion that they can be placed there for a 90-day period. Uh, how long have they been there, that 90 days, you know?
I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have that date in front of me, I can, I can give that to you.
Okay. And to the rest of council, the reason why I'm asking is, I'm just curious if we shouldn't move this to a date certain to, um, push it out to follow the full 90 days, um, as this is just kind of a, a trial period, I would, I would expect.
Mr. Rollins?
I may be wrong, but I was more under the impression that, uh, the safety director felt that this was going to pass, thereby, it was in, was within his discretion to go ahead and enact the 90 days, so that these were already out and established once council passed this, but I, I could be totally wrong, but...
Is that accurate?
I agree.
Yeah. Mr. Cal?
Yes.
Okay, I understand that.
Mr. Schaubert?
So, you can see my thoughts, can't you? Could you restate that, Mr. Rollins, so I understand that, what you said correctly? So, are you saying that...
You don't have to try to trip me up, I, I said what I said.
No, I, so, I'm not trying to trip you up at all, I'm trying to understand the new process for stop signs, so...
He has 90 days to act within some type of discretion for a trial. My assumption going into this was, he thought this was going to pass, so thereby, using his 90 days, he went ahead and put the signs up. It would actually probably cost more now to take the signs down.
So, the new process is if we think it's going to pass, put them up anyways?
That's not what, okay, see, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, see, that's, that's why I wanted to clarify.
You caught me, but I'm not the one to put the signs up.
Any other discussion, or wishes of council?
Make a motion to adopt.
Mr. R. Smith? With a motion? To adopt?
No, you can't.
We have to suspend the rules. Is that to suspend, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I mean typically, this, this should go three readings, I don't, I don't see any reason why it shouldn't go three readings.
But this was the third reading.
This is only the second reading.
Yeah, this is only the second reading.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Schaubert?
Mr. Cal, would, by the next reading, could you give the date, find out the date that these were put in?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I believe that...
I might be able to find the text from my sign guy on my phone right now, getting an Alberd G man.
Which is fine, I still think we should let this go three readings.
Mr. Roush?
Draw my motion.
Okay, withdraw. Mr. Teesmith?
Yeah, I'm just curious, Mr. Cal, is there a traffic control device over there, like...
It was a two-way, now it's a four-way.
Okay, so there's not really any traffic studies going on right now?
Other than when we did the, uh, the mon, we had the monitor up, um, looking at speeds, which we had given that report at the last traffic commission.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Can a second reading? Item number six, ordinance 2025-098-3, designation of deposits amended.
Ordinance designating depositories of public monies of the City of Marion and declaring an emergency as amended.
All right, Ms. Lang, has come out of the Finance Committee?
She's come out of the Finance Committee with the recommendation to, no recommendation to, um, this is just to establish the depository for active monies and interim monies with banks that are local here to Marion City.
Mr. Reese, anything to add to this? No? Anything for council? Second reading?
Leave a second read.
New business, so ordinance 2025-127, OPWC Fund, clerk, will you read?
Ordinance approving additional appropriations and the receipt of OPWC funds from the State of Ohio for the year ending December 31, 2025.
Ms. Lang, again, out of Finance Committee?
This, um, tonight is the first read for, I believe, yes, first read. Um, this is, um, basically funds coming through and going out.
Mr. Rollins?
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
You have a motion? Mr. Prater with a second?
Yep.
Mr. Ratliff?
Just as a clarification, I believe these have been paid, correct? Because they're not truly paid by us.
Correct. She'll take a roll?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teesmith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins? I'll make a motion to adopt.
Do we have a second? Mr. Teesmith?
Yes.
Will you take a roll?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teesmith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eight, Resolution 2025-F-24, clerk, will you read?
Resolution declaring the council's opposition to Columbia Gas's proposed rate increase and requesting the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio deny said request and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ratliff, this come out of the Public Utilities Committee?
Yes, this came out of committee with a 3O recommendation to send on to council for approval. Uh, this is a, something that, I, I want to say it's a 21.6% proposed rate increase by, uh, Columbia Gas, which equates to $29.5 million increase, the citizenry of Marion for our gas, um, from them. So, this is just the first step of us opposing it at the Public Utility Commission, and I will make a motion to suspend.
Mr. Rollins with a second.
So...
Clerk, will you take a roll?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Teesmith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item nine, ordinance 2026-002, 25% budget.
Ordinance to make appropriations for salaries and benefits and other expenditures for all funds during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2026, for the first quarter only. There's a typo on this. This was added to the agenda by Ms. Lang, Mr. Prater, and Mr. R. Smith. I accidentally put Mr. T. Smith on there.
Ms. Lang?
Yes, this, tonight's ordinance, 202602, is being presented. After additional discussions among administration, the state auditors, and myself, it has been recommended that we adopt this ordinance as a temporary budget with a permanent budget to be finalized by April 1, 2026. Approving this allows for appropriations for the first quarter to be put in place starting January 1, 2026. This approach will ensure that the budget and the accompanying plans submitted to the state are aligned and will allow us to address any concerns that may raise while continuing to operate. First read would be tonight, the second read would be on 12/22, and the third read and passing of this temporary budget would be on 1/1 of 2026. I would like to make a motion to suspend Rule 56.
Mr. Rollins?
Question? How many monthly reconciliations have we completed in 2025?
I believe that's for the auditor's office, right?
Have we done it every month? How many monthly reconciliations have we completed this month or this year?
This year, I don't know.
Of any? So what advantage would we have doing a quarterly budget versus passing an annual budget if we don't reconcile the books anyway?
Mayor?
Yes, somebody, anybody?
If I could add to what Councilwoman Lang said, some of it will be repetitive of what she said, and others will be new information. On December 3, 2025, senior staff, the auditor, the deputy auditor, Finance Chair Lang, met with Cindy and Amy from the Auditor's Office. The following is a summary of that meeting and steps identified to move forward toward our goal of fixing those issues that have placed us into fiscal caution. Obviously, their number one thing that they've been telling us since we've started talking with them was that we have to cut expenses and explore possibilities for increasing revenue. Our first step in cutting expenses has been the submission of a balanced 2026 budget. We discussed this at length with them, and were advised that the next step in the process would be to pass this as a temporary operating budget for the first quarter of 2026 and finalizing the rest of the year budget by April 1, 2026. It was discussed that this step would allow us more time to see final 2025 numbers and better be able to adjust if needed prior to setting our full-year budget for 2026, and if changes had to be made, they could be made prior to then. We discussed our nearly $9 million in deficit funds balances, and we were advised that we need to be able to show a plan to address these deficit fund balances and begin to pay them down over time, basically a payment plan. As long as our recovery plan addresses these funds and shows that we will be paying them down over time and not increasing those deficits, that this would be deemed acceptable by the state. Prior to January 23, 2026, we must submit a proposed improvement plan to fix our financial situations that have caused us to be deemed to be in fiscal caution. This plan must be approved by the state prior to implementation. The state will then supervise our efforts in following the approved plan and will determine if we are following the improved plan and making the necessary changes and fixing those issues that have been identified in the letter of fiscal caution. There was lengthy discussion about our current financial software system, New World, and the fact that it will never work as intended for state purposes. Cindy has been around since the inception of New World. The lady from the state has been around since New World was conceived here in the city of Marion, and believes that this system, as well as several other cities that use the same system, continue to have ongoing issues with the system, and if we stay with New World, our financials will never be accurate. She has suggested that we talk to a few other companies that are in use throughout the state of Ohio and are based in the state of Ohio, so they are very knowledgeable as to what is needed by the state for accounting purposes. We happen to know that the county of Marion currently uses Software Solutions, a company that they have used for several years. We have an introductory meeting that I set up with Software Solutions on December 16, 2025, just to gather information, try to wrap our mind around what this would cost if we went to a new system. We discussed the importance of the administration, the auditor, and council all working together on the same page to follow and implement our plan of action. The state will not care who the roadblock is, if there is one. They will just be concerned with the fact that we are not following our plan. If we are not following our plan, they could force us into one of the other categories, being fiscal watch or fiscal emergency. I brought those handouts for everybody tonight. I think I passed them out before, but it explains, Mr. Rollins, it explains exactly what each different category is and what the ramifications are for those categories. Sorry about that. And having our conversation with Cindy, obviously, she said nobody wants us to even go to the next stage, and as long as we get a plan in place that we can all agree upon, and the state agrees to that plan, and we stick to the plan, we should be fine, in the hope of getting out of fiscal caution and get our bond rating back hopefully within a couple of years. So it's our hope tonight to be able to pass ordinance 2602 so the city can move forward into 2026, all while working to correct those things that have placed us in the fiscal caution and eventually be able to obtain our bond rating back. I know that you guys had asked for, and you should have all received, something that looks similar to this, which is where all the cuts were made in all the different departments, and these were all authored by those department heads of those departments. So you'll see there's no set standard for how they worked it or what they gave you guys. They just told you how they did it. Ran across an interesting piece of information today. I found annual budget reports, or the annual report from the mayor going back many, many years. I started looking through those reports and found that in 2002, we had a general fund budget of $15,817,000. That's more than what we have today, some 20 years odd years later. That budget continually went up from 2002. I stopped looking at 2008, and 2008, the budget was $19,994,000. So we're well below either one of those, some 20 years later, with the expenses rising, our revenues staying stagnant, and trying to operate a budget. So with all the hard work that the department heads put in, we were able to bring a budget to you that we anticipate to be, our expenses to be less than what our revenue is going to be. So it is our hope that whether it's first, second, third reading on the first, that we get this 2602 passed so we can move in to the first quarter of next year and then start making changes if we need to during that first quarter.
So is it your wish then, or what you're asking is not to necessarily pass it, but to waive committee consideration to be the first read so we could be on point?
That's correct.
Or a third reading on January 1?
That's what my hope is tonight, not meaning to pass it tonight.
Okay. Waive committee consideration.
Waive committee consideration so we can have this act as our first reading and be on track to have our third reading on January 1. I'd be glad to answer any questions if anybody might have...
Mr. Rollins?
Yeah. So I ask my question because I don't, I don't know, I still don't understand what passing a quarter of a year's budget gains us. In fact, I would just caution the rest of my council members that it's actually going to be a strain on the accounting offices that got us into this predicament to begin with, because they're going to have to adjust all of their books for a quarter of the budget. We did this last time we tried to run a deficit budget through, and it created more challenges than it did anything else. So I'm not understanding what the benefit here is of only passing a quarter of a year's budget. Someone help me understand.
Ms. Lang?
That was the recommendation of the state auditor's office. It was not our brainstorm, it was their recommendation, and the auditor's office was in agreement to be able to, that they would be able to do that and put that in place so they are aware that, again, we'll have a quarter to operate. We have to have it in place and voted on by April 1, so hopefully, we could have it in place and even put it, the permanent budget into place before April 1.
If I could add one thing, I think what it does allow us to do during that first quarter is see exactly what our numbers are coming out of '25, exactly what the carryover will be, and also allow us to reconsider certain things that we have cut from the budget now, be it the Tall Grass program, be it downtown Marion, Inc., and if we see through that first quarter that we're functioning better than we thought we were going to, or we're not going worse than we thought we were going to, we do have a little buffer there that we may be able to accommodate, you know, more things, but we won't know that until later in the quarter.
Mr. R. Smith?
Did I read somewhere that we have to report back to the auditor's office every month?
Yes.
What was it?
Do we have to report back to the auditor's office every month?
At least monthly.
Yeah.
We will submit a report at least monthly on how our progress is going, although I think Cindy will have phone conversations on a regular basis with Chelsea, and they have one set up after this week, and we are due, we have set up weekly meetings beginning this week to start, we've already started formulating our plan that we're going to send to the state. It's just a matter of us all getting together, because I can't say how the auditor's office is going to do reconciliations all the way back to '22. I mean, that's something I can't answer, that's something they're going to have to answer in moving forward through '24 and '25. I can't answer how we cut expenses and that kind of thing, how we deal with the negative line items, I can help with that, but there are just certain things that I won't be able to answer that the auditor's office will have to.
Ms. Lang?
And that was the other thing that the state auditor's office emphasized, is that we did need to have year-end totals, so we knew exactly what our revenue was coming in and what our expenses are going out, that POs would be able to be closed, and those funds could be put back into, so it would change the budget on what we had as far as revenue. It just allows us the flexibility to have a more accurate budget by April 1.
Mr. Schaubert?
Do we have a second?
We don't have a second, you know.
Okay, I will second that so we can carry on our discussion, and I will urge our council members to vote that down and send this directly to committee so we can have all this discussion in committee, and I do not believe that the state auditor said pass a full budget but only release 25%. I believe they told the city to pass a temporary budget, and you must have the full annual budget passed by April 1. That's chapter 5705. Anyone that can read and comprehend English, it's very plainly written, it's right there. So I would say that finance committee work on a salary operational only budget for the first quarter, and then, as the mayor said, then maybe we can build a full year's budget and add in those services that had already been cut in this, the original proposed budget that is sitting in committee right now. And council members can only pass a budget if we have the revenue to cover the expenses. It's state law that we cannot do that, and without reconciling for nearly six years, we have no clue what we have or what we do not have, and we also have negative line items in our audit, in our letter for fiscal caution, it says $9 million, almost $9 million. The next sentence is, but we don't know if that's accurate. It could be worse. I'm assuming it will be worse, but we don't know, and until we have reconciliations, we have no way of knowing if a full annual budget or annual appropriation ordinance can even be funded, and by doing that, going blindly into it, we're adding to the negative line items that we already have. So I would encourage all council members to vote no and waiving Rule 56, put this in committee, that way we can have some more thought and build a true temporary budget and go for it.
Mr. Rattler?
I have at least three topics. One, I was under the understanding that Veritas had reconciliations completed through IFOC 24.
Hey, Veritas reconciled the general account and the payroll account. We have several other accounts that they did not reconcile, they weren't hired to do that.
Okay.
The only year they reconciled all accounts was 2021.
My recollection is they were hired to give us the procedure on how to do it, and we have people that are refusing to do it.
Well, there's that too. We had, and I cannot remember if it was '24 or '25 that we passed a quarterly budget to start out.
Twenty-four.
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 And from your standpoint, was that smoother than in '25 when an entire budget was passed?
I won't say it was, I think the issue was we didn't know where we were going to The problem that arises with a quarterly budget, or the first quarter, which, I'm not sure I could hear Mr. Schaubert accurately, but the state allows, the state is the one that recommended that temporary operational budget.
Right, a temporary, not a 25% of the full budget.
Right, which will be 25% of the full budget, but then a rest of the year budget has to be passed by April 1. We can't do quarter by quarter, although I know it happened in '24 legally, and I don't think you're supposed to do that. It has to, we have to have a full budget by April 1. I think that's everybody's understanding that was at the meeting. The problem we do run into when we pass a quarterly budget is a lot of places may bill at the very beginning of the year for their annual subscription or their whole year service, that may well be over what the 25% allotted was, and what we have said this time and what we did last time, those departments that have that issue come up will have to come to council with an additional appropriation ordinance to get additional money appropriated. So they won't be able to just blindly say, well, this subscription is due, we got to pay it, and then pay it, they'll have to come to council and ask for additional funding to do that because they only have 25%. So it can happen, but they would have to come and ask for it.
My question was which one was smoother?
Absolutely, a, in a perfect world, a full-year budget would be great, but in an imperfect world, not knowing what we're going to close out '25 with, and then still not being really sure what those numbers are, it may give us that latitude during the first quarter to adjust things.
And I say that and I ask that because I think I already know the answer, and I was a big supporter of the '25, and I think we did a 50% at that year too, and...
Twenty-four.
But I learned through the process that that creates problems and issues, and I learned through the process that it even creates problems and issues with the individual line items, because when departments come and ask for additional appropriations, and then you pass the full year's budget, you actually gave them more than what the full year's budget was, because the additional appropriation in '24 was on top of the full year's budget.
Correct.
And so it actually created more problems and cost more money the way that we did it, and again, I was a big supporter of it, and I really thought, okay, we're going to be able to, you know, really have oversight over this, and you actually have less at the end. My other question is that procedurally, the full budget is still in committee.
Right.
This is now passing 25% of a full budget that is still in committee, and I'm not sure procedurally that this is proper. I know I talked to the law director about it, and I had not seen the actual, the actual ordinance and the attachments with it, and he had indicated that it's a different number, and it's different than what's in, than what is in committee. However, it hinges off of what is in committee, and I don't know how you can pass part of an ordinance that hasn't even passed out of committee yet. I just, it just procedurally doesn't make sense.
So we did have a conversation, and this ordinance was drafted last Wednesday afternoon and was tendered to the clerk Thursday morning. It was after the meeting with Cindy and Amy from the state of Ohio, and those administrators in the conference room for four hours did a lot of listening, and the one thing that was clear from Cindy was the first step in removing the city of Marion from fiscal caution is to adopt a quarterly budget for '26, period. This ordinance, in a way, mirrors what we did in '24, because in '24, the annual budget was attached and said at 25%, as amended by council to provide only for the first quarter of 2025. Marion from fiscal caution is to adopt a quarterly budget for '26, period. This ordinance, in a way, mirrors what we did in '24 because in '24, the annual budget was attached and it said at 25%, as amended by council to provide only for the first quarter of 2024. This does exactly the same thing. It has the, essentially, the annual appropriations, and in the caption and in the body, it says at 25% for the first quarter. So this is something we have done before. More importantly, this is what Cindy from the State Auditor, who is working with us to remove ourselves from fiscal caution, to get to the point where we can recover a bond rating and borrow monies to do important things for our community. So I take issue with the fact, this is a proper procedural step. It's not 2601, it's 2602. The difference being this appropriates 25% of next year's budget only, like we did in '24. And it's consistent with a temporary budget under the Ohio Byes Code. It's in the format to be acted on, at least in a first reading tonight, a second reading at the next council meeting, and the timing would be such that it'd be up for the third reading on the first day of January of '26.
The only, the biggest issue I have with what, with your comparison is that in '24, there was an amendment to 202401 that passed out of committee. And we amended 202401 to be 25% of each line item. You are now taking what the 2026 total budget is inside the ordinance of something that's still in committee.
It's not in committee. 2601 is in committee. It went through committee two times. I don't remember one participant on the committee making any suggested changes to it. This is not 2601. This is 2602. It is different in that the appropriations associated with it are for the first quarter of the year only. What's in committee and would remain in committee is the appropriation that was presented for the entire year. And as the mayor said, and I've tried to reiterate, the state of Ohio Auditor's Office, who's assisting us, removing ourselves from fiscal caution, getting to the point where we can recover a bond rating and do important borrowing, this is the process that they recommended we take. I urge council members to waive Rule 56 and let this be the first reading.
So if I could ask on page three, when it says 2026 total budget, are those numbers what's in committee?
Only 75%.
There's a process available under Roberts rules if council's interested in it. Right now, there's a motion to waive the committee consideration. I think that's proper. But if a majority of council believes, under Roberts rules, we could provide clarity, or council can provide clarity, I would suggest there be a motion to discharge this matter from committee and have a vote on discharging this so there's no confusion, the council approving a motion to discharge removes that question whatsoever. I don't have an issue with that. I believe this is a different ordinance. I believe it's properly before council for its first reading once committee consideration is waived. But to remove any doubt, I would recommend there be a motion to discharge from the Finance Committee.
Ms. Lang?
I'll make a motion to discharge from committee.
We already have a motion on the floor to waive Rule 56. Are you rescinding that motion?
I will rescind that motion.
And make a motion to discharge?
The motion to discharge. Make the motion to discharge from committee.
Discharge, why?
The...
Any issue related to the budget?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So ordinance...
Just any issue related to the budget. This is essentially, if it receives a majority vote, the motion to discharge will make clear for the record that this matter is properly before the council for its first reading this evening.
Do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. R. Smith, second. Take a roll.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mr. Schaub?
No.
Mr. Wim?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
No.
Six-three, motion carries. Item 10, ordinance 2025-128, salary reduction ordinance. Clerk, if you read.
So, we're done?
We'll name the council's history.
Wait to see a hand, moving on, I haven't seen anything.
We still have to waive Rule 56.
I'd suggest you move to waive Rule 56.
And I still suggest that council says no and send this back to committee because that's where it's supposed to be at. And I guarantee you, this is our first state, our first test from the auditor of state, and we are failing at putting our name on it.
Anything else from council on item nine? Mr. R. Rattler?
In committee, I know we had discussion about other departments not giving a 10% reduction, and, you know, I know the mayor was going to talk to the judge, I don't know, you know, and so since nothing is in committee anymore, I will ask if every department has taken cuts. I know in our packet of what each department's going to do with the cuts, we don't have every department. And so I, you know, just am not sure what each department's doing, and if each department took the cut they were supposed to. And I think council should ensure that. You know, we can see by our cuts that are, if you look on page two of your packet that we got with the cuts, under police personnel, it says removal of unfulfilled police officer positions, $394,000. I'm assuming that's four, four positions, possibly five, but I'm assuming it's four. And a voluntary layoff of one officer, which would be $96,000. So I'm assuming that's five positions that's going to be unfulfilled in the Police Department. And then we, you know, I came up and talked to the auditor last week, and the same court that's not taking a 10% cut in the special revenue line item funds that she has created over the years has $2.188 million sitting there in just money that she has accumulated that used to come back to the general fund. And so, you know, I don't know how we can just, you know, have good discussion in committee, discharge it from committee, pass it and move it along when we have huge problems budgetarily about different departments taking different advantage of the situation. And, you know, I just, I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's fair to the employees, and I don't think it's fair to the citizens.
Mr. Schaub?
Yeah, I guess I don't expect an answer either, Mr. Ratliff, but could someone explain the transfer out, how it was reduced, $4.2 million? Or even what a transfer out is?
So a transfer out would be from the general fund to support some of the other said funds that those transfers would go to. And if you looked at the original versus the updated one that was presented more recently, the parts was lowered by $1,000, the pool 175. Police was lowered by $2 million, and fire by $1 million.
So a transfer out supports another department. It goes from the general fund out to another department.
Correct.
So if I understand, so we reduce that by $4.2 million, taking that to a total of around $6 million if I am correct for all the transfer outs total?
Correct.
Historically, it's around $8.5 million that these transfer, transfer out has funded these various departments. So in essence, what we did by reducing this transfer out line item, it's not a cut, it's just to make it look like there's a reduction in the budget, and you're starving those other departments further downstream at the end of the year.
So part of doing this, though, was going back to cleaning up those negative line items that were addressed in the fiscal caution letter from the auditor of state. Part of the plan that the administration is going to put forth with addressing each one of those bullet points that has to be submitted by January 23rd is addressing, again, the transfers out and how we clean those up with those negative balances. That would be an adjustment that would be made before the final budget is, or the permanent budget is passed on April 1st.
But if the departments historically need a total of $8.5 million, that means that they will be coming at the end of the year, or towards the end of the year, for an additional appropriation. I believe the Police Department, unless you made significant cuts in your department or whatever revenue or restricted funds that goes through this transfer out, you're going to be asking for $1.2 million.
We made, we made $1.2 million in cuts.
They did.
But that's left money from the transfer out that would be needed.
Are those dollars directly tied to the transfer out?
My understanding is that the Police Department is funded two ways. One is when we passed tax increases in the past, some of that money's dedicated to the Police Department. Other parts come from the general fund. That's the transfer out from the general fund into the Police Department that was cut. We are, the cuts that we made are to the benefit of that general fund that reduces the transfer into the Police Department. And they are, that we cut the 1.2 and she's taken the 1.2 out of that flow from the general fund into the Police Department. That's my understanding of how those two things are connected.
But we, we haven't identified that pool of money, if it's from the income tax, which part of the income tax that was either devoted 25%? I believe it's 25% and you get a portion of that, or if it's the overall income tax revenue?
Yeah, that's above what I was asked to do.
And that's...
Yes, sir.
And that's the same for a lot of those. It's the same for fire, it's the same for transit, it's the same for parks, it's the same for the pool. If we cut what those people are spending, that's less we have to transfer out from the general fund to each one of those departments. So this whole budgeting process can be very confusing. It is very confusing. I'm certainly not an expert on accounting, never claimed to be, that's what we have an Auditor's Office for as a budget director, to help with that. And it still gets confusing. But I'm very confident in the fact that the state says our first step in fixing this problem and getting out of fiscal caution is to pass this quarterly budget, which we have brought in under what we anticipate our revenue to be. And I'm confident that we're going to be able to do that. And I'll reiterate the last paragraph of what I said earlier. State doesn't care who the roadblock is. If we have a roadblock and we're not able to meet our obligations or we're not able to stay with the plan that we presented, they don't care who it is. And they don't have to go necessarily to fiscal watch next. They can go straight to fiscal emergency, and nobody wants that, trust me.
Ms. Lang?
I will reiterate what he said. She was very clear that if, she don't care who the roadblock is, they will not hesitate to take us from watch to emergency, if that's what it takes. And if they do that, then they come in, they take over, and then we go back and we operate at 85% of our approved budget for 2025. And we have to stay within that. And they will monitor that, they will control it, and we will have no say.
Mr. R. Smith?
Do we have a motion on floor to suspend Rule 56? I thought Mr. Schaub?
I don't believe so.
I did not make a motion. I just questioned if we wanted to do it tonight or not.
If we need to make that motion, I'll make a motion to suspend Rule 56.
I'll second.
Take a roll.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mr. Schaub?
No.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
No.
Now, item 10, ordinance 2025-128, salary reduction ordinance. Clerk?
Ordinance to amend, ordinance number 2023-052, as to the precedent of council and council members in declaring an emergency. This was added to the agenda by Mr. Barr, Ms. Lang, and Mr. Rollins.
Yes, I think after our conversations with my colleagues... Yes, sir.
Under Section 1, order shall be amended to read, shouldn't the council members be 9,000, not 12,000, the way it's written? There's no salary reduction in here.
It's not, it's not a salary reduction. The way it's written is it's pushed out to 2028.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
So as I was saying, after our discussion with my colleagues, we're asking every department in the city to make serious cuts. We're all in this together. I think we lead from the front and that we say we're willing to do that also, and after discussion with many of the councilmen here, I believe that's where we're at, and that's why we brought this forward. Mr. Rollins?
I'll make a motion to waive Rule 56.
Mr. T. Smith, second?
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry.
Waive 56. Rollins and T. Smith? If you'll take a roll.
I think you have a question.
Oh. Mr. Daniels?
Tony Daniel, 608 Kim Street. What happened to our rainy day fund? I mean, the millions of dollars that we supposedly had set by just in case of emergencies like this.
Mr. Daniels, I don't think that's related to this item that we're about to vote on, but matters not on the agenda is next. If you'd like to get up and ask that question then, I think that would be...
You don't want to answer the question, that's fine, but I'm asking it.
I think my, I did answer that that's matters not on the agenda. Is this a rainy day fund for the...
That's not an answer, sir. That's, that's basically a flex, and so that's why I'm asking.
Ms. President, I would just encourage us to allow him to. I know you had made a statement that we're trying to lead from the front, we're trying to make cuts because we are in financial problems, so if he has a question about finances, I don't see where that's not...
There's no rainy day...
...an appropriate question.
No rainy day fund in council salaries. And that's what...
No, we're talking about in the general fund, that's where I'm talking about.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. I'm more than willing to allow you to speak and for us to answer you, but we're about ready to vote on this, and that's more for matters not on the agenda, not what we're about to vote for. I hope you understand that. It's only going to be less than two minutes. Thank you. If you'll take a roll.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaub?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Schaub?
I would like to propose an amendment on Section 1 after shall be amended to read. And that's Section 1, striking the first sentence, and then the second sentence after President of Council, comma, City Treasurer.
So you'd like to push out the pay rates for the treasurer till 28 also?
Yes. If we're all in this together, that includes the treasurer.
Mr. Ratliff?
I'll second his motion.
Take a roll.
Hold on. Okay. Mr. Barr?
No.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaub?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
No.
Mr. T. Smith?
No.
Mr. Prater?
No.
Mr. Dickel?
No.
Mr. R. Smith?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Let me quick, 360 by Silver Street. So I just want to be abundantly clear that the treasurer, who ran unopposed and has never done this job ever, is starting at a higher rate than what the treasurer, who has served for four years, is making right now. Is that correct?
And we're under fiscal caution.
And so everyone else is expected to take a pay cut. Police and fire, they... Police and fire, they've cut millions of dollars. I know it's only three grand, but we're starting a new employee with rates. So much for fiscal caution.
I will note that we've had problems with, I believe Mr. Reese has said that's not what he was trained to do and that we're asking him to do more. So that's what we're asking of the new treasurer that's coming in also. Mr. Rollins.
I mean, I just, you know, I mean, the vote's clear, but I mean, I just will echo what she just said. If we have a fire truck that, just for hypothetical, that has six men on it instead of nine, we're asking them to do more too. And so, you know, starting a new person with a 33% raise from what the old person made in, is, it's absurd.
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading roll. Mr. R. Smith. On the second, you'll take roll.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mr. Shawber?
No.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Dickel?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins? Or Mr. R., Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
No.
Motion carries. No, fails.
Seven. All for suspension. All right, that's first reading. Mr. Daniels, matter's not on the agenda.
Don't you say the address yet?
Please.
Well, I, I guess I'll say it like this. I wanted to ask that particular question, but I'm just going to sit there and say it's taken. I am absolutely opposed to that space, fire and police. Those are the few most important areas that we've got. And I don't know what kind of reduction we're talking about. If you're talking about a 10% reduction or 25% reduction, I'm absolutely opposed to it. Because at the end of the day, we need them both. Everything else, DKM now, everything else can be written, can be written down, but it shouldn't be that. Because, I mean, when there's a fire, there they, there they are. When something happens, there they are. And they have to show up because of the way that the union rules are written, whether they, whether they get paid or not. My question.
Thank you. The other matter's not on the agenda. Ms. Craig.
Miami Craig 368, Silver Street. I was going to save this for next week, but then I forgot it wasn't a full council meeting, and I won't be here in the 21st second because I'll be on vacation. But that would be Mr. Ratliff and Mr. Shawber's last night. And I just wanted to say that as a citizen from Marion, that I thank you for everything that you have done for your years of service to the city. We are going to miss your institutional knowledge and your concern for the people of this city. I'm sorry that speaking out, Lang, did you where you are? I'm glad I've gotten to know you and that I can consider you friends and your family's friends. I don't know what to say, next year will be a shit show. I guess I told someone on the way in, people must have been praying for me. Since today, scripture popped into my head, and as we know, all things work together for the good of them that love him and those that are called according to his purpose. For 18, 20 years, you guys served with purpose. And I believe it's in your heart to serve others. I hope you don't disappear from the scene because God knows we need you. But I wanted to say thank you, and I'm going to miss you guys.
Thank you.
And we appreciate everything you've done. And my daughter, we're going to be sorry, but you guys are getting out when you're getting good.
The gentleman in the back.
Hi, I'm James, I'm the Night Moves Director, Mr. Director. Most of my people are either going to work or coming from a evening bus. I do have a couple of grunts, but I can't do anything about that. And I have people that say, I wish that the Night Moves hours were extended so that I could get to my job or to get home from my job. I have one lady that Harley walks, or Ken Harley walk, and yet she, on days that's not running, she has to find her own transportation or hope that the cab boys are calling to come and get her. I don't know if anything else or not, but there's a lot of special events that are, have happened and are going on that fill the bus on once or twice a night. Which, on a 12-passenger bus, that doesn't mean much, but normally I have three or four people on the bus. So when I fill that bus up with the special event people, that makes me happy. I don't, do you have anything else to say? Thank you.
The other matters?
I do have one more question. Miami Craig 368, Silver Street. So we're hearing about all of these cuts, million dollars, fire department, police and whatever, transit. When are we going to find out how those things affect us? I mean, they know that they're going to be working less, but when are we going to know what's going to happen with transit? When are we going to know, you know, like, you said, I know as an example, but six firefighters on one fire truck.
I would just make
I know, as an example, I get it. Fire at the towers the other night. But like, when I hear $175,000 cut to the pool, is the pool going to open? You know, when will we know how these cuts, even if it's the full 2026 budget, how they affect us? Because we're already talking about raising revenue, taxes, and sewer bills, fees, and that's the only way you guys can collect money from us. So when are we going to know how the cuts affect us? And when are we going to know how bad you're going to hit us?
Mr. Mayor.
Some will be immediately visible, like the Night Moves shuttle that we talked about, that will be shutting down at the end of the year. Others, we won't know until we get through the first quarter, hopefully before the end of the first quarter. As we continually evaluate this budget as we're moving forward to try to stand on what our revenues.
Mr. Shawber.
Mayor, you just said that Night Moves bus will end January 1 of '26. This gentleman just got up and spoke about people going to and from work in the evenings. Will there be evening service like we have now where they call and schedule a ride? Or there will no longer be any evening service?
The only evening service we have right now is the Night Moves shuttle on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
So we should tell those people now that they're not going to have a ride to work at the beginning of the year? Instead of maybe people stand up at city council and ask when they're not going to have a ride to work?
It has been posted as of December 1st by our Director of Transit.
It has been posted?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith.
Yeah, the question, we're going to lose the Night Moves bus, but we have other buses that are running during the day. Is it possible to relook at the schedule and maybe shove one of those buses out? Not, not get a new route, just use one that we've got and move the hours? Is that possible?
We can always look at that kind of thing, and that would shore what we have during the day, and people wouldn't be able to get to and from where they need to during the day. That's why they haven't extended it into the night prior to us going in with the Night Moves shuttle.
I guess we would have to look at the ridership during the day and see where the least amount of riders are and work on that, right?
Mr. Prater?
Yeah, I remember a few weeks ago at a council meeting, a lady got up and spoke about how much she appreciated the Night Moves bus taking her to work. And I know we've cut a lot of things and we have to cut a lot of things, but I, I, I know people that I worked with at City School Transportation that just moved to Marion and depended upon a way to work, uh, work, uh, at early in the morning, and people that are working second shift and third shift jobs. And if there is something, if we're closing the Night Moves bus down, like Mr. R. Smith suggested, is there some alternate way keeping the same staff that we can have a nice time bus that people that have, do not have a car and need a way to work can get, get a way to work? Because this is a hard thing on a lot of people that really need it, that want to go to work.
Clerk.
Mr. Bodine, I have a question.
Yes.
There's supposed to be a public hearing at Transit on this, and I cannot remember the date.
It is this Wednesday at 5:30. I was getting ready to say that. At Transit, yes, not here, at Transit.
The tent.
I just want to say, as, uh, I would have loved to seen this program flourish, and I think it will in the future. You have to understand the situation the city's in now, and tough decisions need to be made. And currently, Night Moves is not supporting itself. That is just a fact. Council also made it clear, they did not want to see any fee increases for Transit. So that is another situation that has affected this as a whole. At the end of all this, you know, I hope this is the administration that stops this, this train ride that we've all been on for many, many years, you guys much more so than I. I hope we figure out a solution for prosperity in the end. And that prosperity is offering our citizens. Night service for bus, it's, it's among many other things. I, I sympathize with our Night Moves driver, and I thank him. And I apologize to him at the same time, but this is the reality we're living in. Thank you.
Mr. Rollins.
Um, a couple of things. One, you know, um, you know, I just, I don't like the statement, it's this council that didn't want to raise rates, when it was the administration that decreased the Night Moves rates. This council did not take it from $5 to $2. We had no part of that at all. So although we did not want to raise the rates for everybody, we had no part of the decrease of rates that the Night Moves got. I just want to make that perfectly clear, as I feel like blame was being laid on council with that. But again, when Night Moves started, I didn't support it at all. I thought it was a bad idea, I thought it had a bad purpose, I thought it had a bad intention. And it morphed into something, though, that was good. And what we had heard is that we learned through the process, and that we were fulfilling a need that was here in the community. And so, and I, what we had said was we were glad that we went through the process because we have a need that's being, that's being met, that's here. And so, you know, I know cuts have to be made, and no cut is fun. But if we shut it down, then what, what did we learn? What, what good did it do for us to go through a process where we lost thousands of dollars? And now we have no service at all, and we have a group of people that has come to rely on it. So I, you know, you know, meanwhile, we have $2.2 million sitting in this very room all, all day long that should be part of the general fund. You know, it's just, you know, some people on council and some people in the administration have to really take that on. Because, you know, I mean, I, I mean, I don't want to just keep harping on the court, but it's, it's been a sore subject with me for pretty much ever since Judge Ballinger has been judge. She is the most expensive judge we could have. And, you know, again, I was one of the council members that went to the Supreme Court with her for arbitration for the city. And, you know, if you, if you overspend by even $500,000 a year, and you've been judged for 16 years, that is $8 million that this general fund could, could have that you have squirreled away. And you've spent on all this stuff and all this staff that we don't need. And it's, and you keep people on misdemeanor fours on paper for two years while you're not providing any service or any reporting just to run your numbers up so you're eligible for more grants. And it's just, it, it's just a racket, and it's a circus show, and it shouldn't be taken advantage of that, especially by somebody who wears a robe. And, you know, what, what I will never understand, from Judge Finnegan to Judge, Judge Ballinger, is that we have the same courtroom, we have the same virtually numbers in the police department, we have the same numbers in the law director's office that feed the court, but the court has grown by three times. And it's just, it is absurd. And I have harped on it, and I, you know, I was willing to go to the mat every year on it, but nobody in this city, from previous to current administration, to previous to current majority of council, nobody will take that on. But the citizens' pockets get picked by this court every single year.
Mr. Bodine.
I have nothing to add to that portion of it, but beginning of your statement, you guys were talking about how, I mean, it's a fact. We discovered, we took a shot, we, we thought something new and innovative in Marion, trying to modernize everything. Clearly, Marion was not ready for that yet, but what Marion was ready for, at least to a limited amount, was people needing transportation in the evenings. So I just want to urge council, if there's things you don't like about what's being cut and what's not being cut, I'm all for it. This is tough decisions all around. It's tough decisions when you have $3.9 million in overdue fees for sanitation. It's tough for us. There's a lot of other things you guys could look at, if you guys really want things like downtown Marioning, and you guys want things like nighttime bus service. I encourage you to work with us and help us figure that out and have your voices be heard. I totally encourage that. And I, for one, I certainly don't want to see Night Moves go away, but that's where we're at. And you guys have a say, so I encourage that. Work with us.
Mr. Daniels.
Miami Craig 608, Kent Street. I know what you say, but do you remember that Mayor Schertzur took her on and lost? I remember the conversation when she was here. When she sat, when you, you asked your questions. And she sat there and said what she did, she says, "I will not be dictated by, dictated to by you, I am the court." You remember that?
I do.
Schertzur decided that he would sit there and stop making the $135,000 at the time, I believe, a year to her, because at the time it was when she had 1.1 million. And she took him, took this council to court, and she won. I don't know who made that decision, but they ended up having to pay her anyway. I mean,
She, it's, I don't know that that's completely accurate. I would not say that she won. We all went and agreed to certain things. We all signed a thing that we said we wouldn't say what that we agreed to. However, she went right out and talked about it, and she has yet, to this day, to follow through and honor what she agreed to. A judge has not honored in years what she agreed to in the Ohio Supreme Court.
Oh, you got me. I mean, I, I completely understand what you're talking about. I mean, I remember 2021, when that came through and they were doing the, the city cleanups, and they were using those kids to sit there and do, do the cleanups, and, well, they were on some kind of probation or whatever, but I, I guess I kind of asked one of the probation officers, I said, "Do they get paid anything?" I mean, because they're out there for, you know, six or eight hours, or I guess they don't, because they just work off their, work off their probation.
Which she, she sure turned duties to get adequate money that she's supposed to get. Which she sure turned duties to get adequate money that she's supposed to get from the county. And she was supposed to go and get those backed funds, or at least try to, and she has yet to do anything for your behalf, for your pocket, except send her money.
Mainly because she believes that she's invulnerable.
She's got a gavel.
I'm just saying that I kind of remember it, so, anyway.
Mayor McCray through 65 Silver Street. So you're saying that the county owes municipal court money? Because municipal court is countywide, so do they just not pick up an appropriation every year? Or do they are just not enough?
The judge wasn't sending proper invoicing for, what was it, salaries, benefits?
Like not getting a proper percentage from them?
Correct. And she refused to retroactively go after it.
Has it? Are we doing it now?
Have no clue.
We don't know. Okay. Is there anything, since we obviously see that no one will do anything on taxpayers' behalf, or not enough of anyone will do anything on the taxpayers' behalf, is there anything that the taxpayers can do to force this? Like a rip or something like that?
I have no idea.
Anyone?
No idea.
Because, I mean, like, why aren't we forcing the county prosecutor to pick up, to collect property taxes? Why aren't we forcing all of these things, that all these sources of revenue that were owed? Why aren't we collecting on that? I don't understand. We're sending income tax onto the state attorney general. We're sending sewer bills onto property taxes that don't get collected. I mean, we're trying to raise sewer bills, raise income tax. Why aren't we going after this revenue? Sounds like it's a lot of money.
Mr. Watts?
The city does collect benefits for the courts, from the county.
We collect money to pay their benefits?
Yes.
Do we, does the city contribute to their benefits, or does the county cover that completely?
No, we contribute, and they cover their share.
Do they cover their salaries at all?
I don't believe so.
So the city pays the municipal court salaries other than grants entirely?
Judges get paid differently.
I know how judges get paid on countywide employees.
No, the employees, we don't, we cover the employees.
So the city pays for the employees, even though it's a countywide court?
Correct.
And the county does not pay for all of their benefits?
Correct.
So the county is like not even covering half of what the court costs?
The payroll. The benefits, correct.
Why? Y'all are ready to nick one dime us to death, why aren't we hitting up the $2.1 million fund? Why are we asking these guys to run lean in dangerous situations, when we've got millions of bucks we could be tapping into? Who, how do we fix this? What do we do? Anyone? Someone has to have an answer in this room. Someone. Someone.
The only way we can do that is put a route.
No, we have to be able to collect money from the court. We're supposed to be equal and separate branches here. Why can't we collect money from the court? I mean, some of it would have to go to the police department, because it's traffic fines and tickets and whatever else, I'm assuming. So there's some of your money. I don't get why we're not tapping into this money, why we've never heard about it until now, sort of.
Mr. Shalber?
Yeah, I do believe that with our current fiscal caution status that could potentially be elevated, her stranglehold on that $2.1 million will be loosened, because the fact that city has to find other revenue sources.
Then we need to actively pursue the situation with the county?
Yes.
Because if we're funding more than 50% of that court, well, we are funding more than 50% of that court, and we're asking these guys to run unsafely, and we should all be ashamed.
Name's Kendra Lee-Mayer, 890 Giv Hart Street. We need to hold accountable for this money. What money you speak of, we need to get it to the table. If it's not allowed to be brought to the table, I want to know why not? Because I've been in this court, and I stood right here, and they said, "Do you have an OBI?" And I said, "Yes." So that says honesty. I want everybody to be able to come stand right here and put your hand up and say honesty. And if you can't, then sit down, because that is ridiculous, $2 point some million dollars. I had to pay like 1,600 something. But yeah, I drunk, I drank my drink, and I drove my car. There's a lot of people, and there's a lot of stop signs that are up, collecting this money, that apparently she's putting in her pocket or some fund. I demand, as a citizen, we know where it went and now. And another question, I do things on TurboTax. What about all the people on TurboTax, as far as in collecting money for taxes? I technically do things for, on the TurboTax, to file a state and a federal return. I don't technically file a city return. However, if you look at my check sub, it says city taxes are taken out. So I want to know, if I'm not physically filling out a piece of paper that forces the hand from some magic fund that it's setting, because it's coming out of my paycheck, if I don't forcibly take my hand and sign a piece of paper to move it from here to there, is it not done? I want to know the answer, because if it's not done, then there's a lot of people that are doing it with TurboTax that aren't paying city taxes.
I'll handle your tax question. And I have talked to the finance chair, and I've talked to the mayor about this in the last, you know, two weeks or so.
I heard you the last time. I do remember you mentioning it, that's why I'm here.
We do not have very good follow-through with the income tax department.
Why not?
And, but somebody like you...
Yeah, me, right now, I'm demanding it. As a citizen of Marion, I demand it. Whatever you need to do, I want it done.
Let's lower the level, please.
Yeah, well, I'm not cussing.
Lower the level, please.
I want to lower my level, but let me tell you something. Now, so this is what Marion needs, guys. This is what we need. We need somebody that stands up. I call for you. I don't want your jobs cut.
Address the council, please.
I don't want you pulling me over every time I turn around for an unnecessary stop sign. Okay? But we need to do things, but if there is corruption...
Ma'am, the thing is...
It needs to be addressed, because everybody wants to address corruption all the way around. It needs to be addressed right here. Apparently, it's going on, because we're almost $10 million in debt, so I want to know where it's at.
Well, the original, the thing is, TurboTax or not, every person who makes more than $500 a year that lives inside of Marion is responsible to file a city tax return.
Okay, who says this? Where is this actually at? Because no one, okay?
In your city ordinances.
In my city ordinances? Ladies, and this is why I talk, city ordinances, city ordinances, all this bull crap about city ordinances. We here as the public don't have this book of ordinances that y'all have, you see?
Ma'am, it's online. It's online for every read.
So we're just supposed to get up online and just constantly read everything, so we can just know everything? Okay, all right, all right. That's just one thing. There's a whole lot of books that work, and there's a whole lot of codes that get added constantly. My point. And I'm not going to keep up to date on every code that gets added, because there's a lot. So, my question is this, back to this. So it comes out of my checking account, so now what? So I'm paying it, but I'm not?
I'm not, if your job holds it out of your check, then you probably do not owe any at the end of the year, but you are supposed to file a tax return that shows you don't owe anything at the end of the year.
Okay.
The problem that we have in Marion, in, you know, I went over this in the last committee, and I went over it in the past, but, is that you may not have filed for a long time.
I filed probably some, because I've not always done all my taxes with TurboTax, and I'm not an accountant. But apparently, we're allowed to do it on TurboTax. No one stops me, no one's coming to my door.
But if you have never got a letter from the city saying, "Where is your tax return?"
I have actually had papers before, and I actually wrote on there one time, I paid my taxes, and I sent back.
Then I, I mean, I...
And actually, I'm not really supposed to have to pay taxes, but wrote it on there.
Okay, well, I mean, I can't answer for the tax department, other than, you know, we need some significant changes there.
So back to this one, I want you guys to be determined. I just want you guys to do something about this $2 point some million dollars. That's what I'm talking about.
Who's your city council person up there?
My city councilman is right here, the one I voted for. The one I voted for, yes.
I appreciate that. I think you could call and ask him, or the tax commissioner, Martin Watts here, I'm sure he'd love to answer any questions you have. You can call his office as well.
The $2.8 is grant money that the courts have received that is spend specific. If they get a grant to buy computers, they'll put it in their, into a fund that says court computers. They're not allowed to spend that $2.8, no matter what Mr. Shalber thinks, on anything but computers for the courts. So that $2.8 is expense specific, so there's no way to go in and...
That is not an accurate statement, is the problem. When you pay a speeding ticket, there is portions of that fine that go into different funds.
It doesn't go into those funds?
It most definitely does, like the municipal court computer fund. Well, the last time we argued, you were wrong.
I think it's about time we move on to committee assignments.
I just think it needs something done, since I know you all want to just persuade it on. It's being said right here on record, I want something done about it.
Ms. Dyer?
I know, this is a little crazy, but Tara Dyer, 485 Mon Grand Avenue, and I was sitting there, and I know your history with Judge, but I think all of you are talking about her, a powerful woman in this city behind her back. She's not in this room, you know. And full disclosure, my son-in-law works for her, but I think it's cowardly of us to like judge this, $2.8, then this, and then that. If you got a bead with somebody, I've always heard that you need to go to their face. She's not in this room.
We haven't all talked about her, ma'am.
Yeah, but I'm saying, she's not in here now. We spent 20 minutes talking about money that should go, and he just told us that money can't go in this fund, and I like to believe Mr. Ratliff, because 99.9% of the time, he is right, but I just think, you know, let's just, you know, get her, if you've got something with her, or whatever, you know, she's not in the room, you know? So, if she's not here to dispel, or to say, "Hey, okay, I'll give you the money for..." I mean, I'm sure she wants to help the city as well, because like you guys said, we're all in this together. So stop talking about her, a powerful woman in this community, unless you invite her into one of these meetings and have her, you know, face this tribunal, okay?
Mr. Rollins?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Dyer, for your comments. I will mention, my first year on city council, I requested that all the department heads, including the judge, come. She refused. My finance committee, there were, every department head from the entire city was here in the audience, with the exception of the courts. They are invited.
But they've been here. The courts of Tom Stotts comes all the time.
For grants.
To report that they got, which he said. He said, "That money, they're making their own money through grants."
They're not spending it, they're spending our money.
They're spending, it's like you said about the opioid money. We gave it to the city, remember? We gave it to the five, that money is only allocated for specific things, right? So we could take that money and give it to the city to offset some of the inaccuracies that are there. So she's got grant money that...
It's not, it is not all grant money.
Well, that's what he said.
Well, I can't help it, he's wrong.
Okay.
I don't know.
Like I said, 99.9% of the time, I believe you, because you all buy the funds that you receive from court costs, come back to the general fund. But let's move on, because you're not...
Did you have something else, Mr. Rollins?
I'll just ask one other question. Have the five checks been sent?
No.
And can we ask why?
Yes, because they were not vendors, and we're trying to get them to send us their vendor sheet and their W9s. Until we can get their W9s, we can't send them a check, because they're not vendors with the...
Now, your boss told me that she got the last W9 on Friday, and she would try to make sure all the checks were sent today.
I only have three of the five W9s.
Can the three be sent?
Yes, they could.
They could, or...
Well, wasn't this something the council passed? So wouldn't you normally, in the system that we have set up, create a pay invoice to send it to us, so we could send a check out? This was your council's idea.
It's called an ordinance, and a roll call, and the mayor's signature. There's your procedure.
No, you can't, you've got to still follow accounting procedures.
No, we don't. We haven't been sent out yet.
I'm sorry.
I don't have, I don't know the process. You passed the ordinance, I thought you guys wanted to pay.
You have a response for that, Mr. Rollins?
Oh, he does it, I'll speak for him.
Mr. Collins?
I did check last week, and they were waiting on the last one, but she thought the checks would be out by Friday. That was the last I heard. So I did follow up my check to see where we're at, and she wasn't in the office today.
Okay, well, she told me Friday, baby sent out today.
On the committee assignments. Ms. Lang, airport lanes and buildings?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Rasmuth, jobs and economic development?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Digtel, legislation codes and regulations?
6:30 liquor perimeter reviews.
Municipal services, parks and rec, Mr. Smith?
6:35. We have a resolution for the senior center that I'd like to present to the committee, and then we'll also have public conversation, and another resolution that I'd like to bring forward. So yes, 6:35.
Mr. Rollins, public utilities?
Nothing, call it this time.
Regional planning on the 4th Wednesday, 7:00 PM in the prospect room?
Yes.
Streets and sewers, nothing at this time. Traffic commission, nothing at this time.
We might have some, we might have the study back from Silver Street.
Okay, we'll call that 6:40 then. Traffic commission, or was that for traffic commission?
Yes, sorry.
Does anyone need an annexation, Mr. Prater?
No, nothing at this time.
Ms. Lang, finance?
I'm going to deflect to Mr. Rollins.
Yeah, first of all, let me first off by passing on my condolences to Ms. Lang, Councilwoman Lang. Her father passed away. She will not be at the meetings on Monday. I'll take 6:45 for old business, and there's two pieces of new legislation as well.